At this time, we'll open our public hearing which will deal with the alley closing between Prospect and Ridge Avenue. And I will open the floor to anybody that has anything to say for or against that alley closing. Okay, there nobody, nobody's coming forward, so I take it it is an issue that will be put towards the council, and I'll consider this public hearing closed. Okay, we'll move into the council meeting. That didn't take long. Uh, Mr. Pratt, would you please call roll?
Brian Herring.
Present.
Mary Jean Krieger.
Present.
Mitch Magnus.
Present.
David Wilson.
Present.
Brian Oswald.
Present.
Heath Kirkpatrick.
Present.
Joel Williams.
Present.
Dana Taylor. You don't want... Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
This time, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand, and we will have Mike Fisher will lead us in prayer. Here, come on up here, and I will ask everybody to remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this evening just to give you thanks for the beautiful weather that you blessed us with over the last few days. We give thanks that we live in a nation, and a state, and a city where we can come together and address the city's issues, and also open it all with prayer. We're so thankful to you for the many blessings that you give us, and we just ask that you lay your guiding hands on our representatives that are here tonight, our councilmen, our folks that work so hard for our city, as well as for our county, our state, and our nation. We just ask all these things. Bless the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. My friends, to the fight of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, we'll go into approval of the January 26 minutes. Anybody's got anything that they want to change on that?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the January 26 meeting minutes. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor by?
Aye.
All opposed, same? We've got our department reports, and the only one on here is Luke, so, Mr. Parker, and he left? Well, I'll have to come back to him. We'll get down to committees unless anybody else wants to say anything in the department. Okay, we'll go down to committees. Mr. Williams giving...
Not this time.
Mr. Magnus.
It's Luke's presentation of the nation.
Would you go get him? Make a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, okay, okay. Mr. Wilson. Well, we do have one item in your, actually, it's in your internal affairs, and I'll bring that up. We have discussed this issue. Did everybody get, not here, did everybody get a sheet on the cost factor on that to boost on that? Okay, he compiled a cost factor on his... The salary, he put on the high end of $60,000. Retirement, $8,700, insurance, $10,000, payroll taxes, $38.25, startup expenses, $5,000, which totals $87,525. Okay, the breakdown by department, and this breakdown is subject to change. It's just like our maintenance deal, you know, if we have more users, and he compiled this by users. Water, did I need to read all this? You all got this information?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Anyway, okay, water, $4,200, sewer, $2,100. Water treatment, $2,100, sewer treatment, $3,100. Admin, $4,200. He got that big wrong. I know that's wrong. That's gotta be about $1,000. No. Accounting, $8,400. Code enforcement, $1,000. Maintenance, $2,100. Building and grounds, $1,000. Safety, $2,100. Fire department, $9,500. Paul, you can leave the room now. Police department, $33,000. Dispatch, $11,000. Street department, $1,000. And conservation department, $1,000. That is a generalized, more or less, cost factor, and those, that's subject to change as far as users go, but...
What's the non-efficient based on?
Users.
Yeah, but I mean, is this based on employee numbers, or is it just an arbitrary number?
It's arbitrary number. Luke could probably want to explain how you pick those numbers out of the sky. I'm telling them, well, mine was just figured on. You know, Fire Department's got like five computers, I think, but if you have several users, using those...
That's why I have to do this, based on number of employees using it, based on the number of employees in the department?
Number of employees using it. And believe it or not, I figured this would probably be somewhere in this neighborhood. General fund, about $19,000. Rest of it will be totaled out in the other departments. But like I say, this is all subject to being totally looked at every single month, or whatever. But that's a cost factor in our IT department.
I'd like to have a printout of that also.
Yeah. Christine, I hate that you're here. You're going to have to work. I'm sorry. You need to probably make about 10 copies. But based on those figures, I'd like to open up for discussion. You know, I know we discussed it quite a bit in the past, but I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, going forward, we need this. Well, actually, we need it tonight. Oh, you got that up? I think we're hiring IT person. But anyway. I'll open it up for discussion.
Can we get any kind, I mean, do we know how much we currently spend on third-party vendors?
Oh, yeah, we don't want to hear that.
I do.
You do?
Yes, I do.
Right at about $11,000. You know, does that justify itself? No. But as far as current spending, but we're not where we need to be.
The reason I say that, if our spending is inadequate, it's obvious that what we're doing as far as the activity in regard to IT is inadequate also. That's the reason, we only spend $10,000 in the city, because size.
But like I say, we're peace-term, too.
Right, and you have people doing it on themselves rather than having an higher number of staff.
And I know lots of the police department, but believe it or not, Chief Woodruff over there, he can do it. But does he need to be doing that all the time? He spends too much of his time working on IT stuff. And he needs to be doing other things. And I already talked about Barbara, so he's kind of like me. Know how to hit the delete button, that's about it.
Wrong time.
Yeah, I did the wrong time, I lucked out the whole thing. Anyway, any further discussion on this? I would like to see a motion on the table that we approve us approaching hiring an IT person for our city. Because we're not going to do a thing unless it comes to this campus. We're at dead stop.
On that, like I say, right now, you'd be looking at a cost of $76,000 now. You've got to take your current costs, what you're spending now.
Oh, yeah, obviously, right.
So it's not the full $87,525.
Okay, if nobody's gonna bring anything to the table, I'll, that will be table. Somebody else bring something up?
I'm sorry.
All right. Okay, we'll move on. Ms. Crager.
Yes, I have something fantastic that I observed last night. I had never seen the fire department in action. Because who goes when there's a fire? Except the lady that lives next door to me had a fire last night. I saw professionalism, and I saw compassion to this lady. And they did a fantastic job. Thank God for the neighbor that saw the smoke coming out of her house, and the police were right there taking care of it. But I was so impressed. I've never been that close to them fighting a fire because I've always been, stay out of the way, and I did stay out of the way.
Oh, you're getting ready to say.
They did a fantastic job.
Well, thank you for the kudo. Did you bring cookies over after they were finished?
No, I didn't. They didn't leave till after 1:00, and I didn't have time to bake them. And I didn't want to give them a stomachache. But they were there a good two hours, but they did a fantastic job. I was just amazed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Crager. Mr. Oswald, I think we do have something in yours.
We do, turn it over to Wade.
Okay. It is the criminal fund, Highway 7 in South Waterline.
We discussed that, I guess, at committee meetings. You know, the request is to use funds from the water and sewer, the water fund deserves. The detailed estimate puts about $540,000. It's early on, you know, if we can appropriate $600,000, and then I can come back once we get bids and let you know where we stand. And I have any questions on the information that was provided or discussed at committee? These estimates are to replace the existing Asbestos Cement line from Berry Edition Outset and South to Harness Road. We will still have some more of that line continuing out further south in Harness, but we've not had quite as many issues with that section. So this will, and this will also actually cover the vast majority of customers that we have that are probably set in south, help prevent them from dealing with outages and boileries.
Make a motion to approve $600,000 appropriations.
A second, Ted. I have a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? There being no further discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Do you have anything else, Mr. Oswald? And Ms. Taylor's not here, so, man, you want to handle all that more than some revolution? Do you want me to do that?
Go right ahead and I'll do that.
You gonna do that? You gonna do that? Okay.
Once you get the big button.
Oh, I do? Okay, first one on there is the fire code, the building and fire code, which we've already read. We put it on its first reading, and it goes to a second reading. Does anybody want to discuss that prior to...
Motion that we put it on its second reading by title only?
Second. You made the second.
You made it.
Oh, I already did.
I have a motion and a second to put it on its second reading by title only.
Who's second, Luke? Discussion.
Any discussion, ladies? There being none, all in favor by aye? Oh, excuse me, sorry, I can't roll it call.
Mary Jean Krieger.
Yes.
Mitch Magnus.
Yes.
David Wilson.
Yes.
Brian Oswald.
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Joel Williams.
Yes.
Brian Herring.
Yes.
An ordinance replacing Chapter 11.04, 11.16, and 11.20 of the City Code of Harrison, Arkansas regarding the building code, fire prevention code, and residential code.
Would you care if you go again? We need to get through this. If anybody wants to make a motion to put it on its third reading, I will entertain that. If they don't, we'll leave them.
I'll make a motion that we put it on its third reading by title only.
Okay, you all hear a second?
I'll say that needs it yours.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to put it on its third reading by title only. Any discussion?
Park color.
Mitch Magnus? David Wilson?
Yes.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Motion passed.
An ordinance replacing Chapter 11.04, 11.16, and 11.20 of the City Code of Harrison, Arkansas regarding the building code, fire prevention code, and residential code.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adoption. I have a motion there, a second? I have a motion for adoption and a second. Any discussion? All in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried. Do we need emergency? Do we need emergency? That will take effect 30 days, right?
Aye, it will take effect 30 days after publication.
Okay. Next ordinance. Electrical code, second reading.
Make a motion to put the electrical ordinance on the pass on the title only.
I have a motion there, a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
If you wanted to expedite this, if you want to treat it the same way, you could amend that motion, put it on its second and third reading all at once.
Okay, it is what it is. Any discussion? There being none, it's like to call roll, please. David Wilson?
Yes.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
An ordinance replacing Chapter 11.12 of the City Code of Harrison, Arkansas regarding the electrical code.
I entertain a motion to put it on the third reading. We can move on. Okay, we will move on. I don't know if we're going shortly. Okay, now, now we're going into alley closing, which we just had a public hearing. And, Director Jonas, does anybody, do you all have those documents? Everybody has those documents? And this is a regular ordinance, and we're closing. Actually, giving city land back to the surrounding landowners, and we'll have to go through the whole...
This is a permanent ordinance, so it will need three readings.
And I'll entertain a motion, or this ordinance, to put it on the first reading.
I'll make a motion that we set this ordinance on, put it on its first reading by title only.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Is everybody familiar where this is actually at? Everybody familiar with it? Okay. I will have Park color, please.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor Epsom?
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilson?
Yes.
An ordinance vacating the alley of Fairgrounds Edition, Block 5.
Okay, this, actually, we probably need to go through, because the county is wanting to build a fence in that area up there to protect their belongings. It was asked, actually, this is something that the county slipped up, and we didn't get done last year. But I would like to see a motion to put it on a second and third readings tonight. And I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion that we put it on its second and third reading by title only.
To have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that?
Are they going to actually build a fence in the beginning?
I think you appropriated the funds, have you not appropriated the funds? Okay, any further discussion on this? Park, we'll call roll, please.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor Epsom?
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilson?
Yes.
Brian Oswald?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance vacating the alley of Fairgrounds Edition, Block 5.
I entertain a motion for adoption.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? We need emergency.
We need emergency.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt emergency. Okay, any discussion on emergency? I'll put it in the next. Okay, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Here, thank you. I know the county will be happy with that. Oh, we have some youngsters here tonight, I know that, and glad to have you all. Actually, the HMS East Project Food Plantery, guess what? You all are up first, and come on up here, get behind this podium here, introduce yourselves.
We have a slideshow, so can we get it on?
Okay, this should come in, since we don't have an... What do you have? Do you have laptop?
Uh, no, we have a phone right now.
Is it on like Google Drive?
Yes, yes, it's in Google Drive.
If you want to log into your Googles...
Can I log in?
Oh, no.
No?
I don't have Wi-Fi in here. Till we get our IT guy.
He can use it. You know what? He, sorry.
Oh, she's got, she's got a hotspot. She's got a hotspot.
Yes, he has it on his phone as well, because it's easier for him to...
He has his phone, what kind of phone does he have?
Well, we might as well do this, because they've got one too, they need to get online for it.
It's in your email.
Should be running. Okay, you guys want to, somebody want to come here and log in here? Or if you want to take the laptop to the podium, you can run it from there. Yeah, why don't you all introduce yourself while you're, while we're kind of waiting here, all right?
I'm Jack Leslie, I'm a junior fourth K.
And here are you all representing.
We're representing HMS East.
HMS East? What's that HMS stand for?
Harrison Littlest.
Okay, all right. Are you proud of it?
Yes.
Okay, great. We'll get you going. Since we don't have an IT person, we got a little glitch.
Get Marvin to get here. I'll do a ballgame.
Yeah, let Marvin. Marvin, I could really...
Who's this Marvin you speak to? Oh, you mean she holds. This is a good problem.
There we go.
So you're the IT, great. What happened to the license? That's for a home court two weeks ago. Just curious.
Oh, that's not my project. Oh, I'm just here for moral support.
All right, are you all ready?
Yes. Okay, talk, I'm going to tell about this. So this is what we're planning to build. Um, we currently don't have a location where we like want to, but it's, it will be three, it's going to have six faces, three by three by two, and it'll be on a four-foot tall post. And like, we haven't had food for the first three months of it, but we will be taking food from donors, and that's who we will be mainly relying on for this. And this project, because it's small, it'll be easy access... And this project, because it's small, it'll be easy access, and it'll be open 24 hours a day, unlike some other projects that maybe only five or six. And we wanted to build it here though, um, we planned to build it over by the first, the church over there. And, um, we planned to build there because it would be secure, it would be a secure location, and we'd be able to be in right by the church. Um, as well, um, it says that it is a great city hall, so we can hopefully detect the box and make sure no one vandalizes it or make sure everyone uses it properly. This helps our community to help in hunger, this is like, it's targeted to people that, like, can't afford food, it looks less fortunate. We're hoping to improve the way that people, um, that aren't hungry.
You want me to plug y'all? Y'all came in and made this presentation to me, and I know you didn't have quite the audience, but I think it's a great program, actually what you're trying to do is put a pantry out in the open, where somebody homeless or whatever that needs something to eat, they can get it at that station. And where they want to put this is over, we have a, um, a exchange zone over across from City Hall right over here, and they want to put it over there in the exchange zone, and it's, it's a box about anything?
It's about, um, about...
That's from Rock.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, and you all are gonna keep it stopped, and you're gonna monitor it, and you're gonna work it?
Yes, sir.
I think it's a great program.
Outstanding.
Yes. Okay, I will entertain a motion for approval of this by the council.
Some moves.
Oh, boy, great. All of the party by?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Congratulations. Now, there's no homeless people, everybody in here can buy food now, just don't go out there and just think you're going to buy and get you a candy bar. Okay, we'll try to get set up for the junior high East Project. Oh, it's still a middle school, I'm sorry, I got down here wrong. Anyway, we have two people, if they want to come forward and introduce themselves. Oh, just one? Oh, what happened to your cohort?
Oh, um...
Oh, okay. All right, young man, introduce yourself and tell us what you're gonna do.
I'm Bentley Lerner, I'm part of Harrison Middle School East, and I'm gonna tell you about my project, CTC, the Community Trash Window.
Well, I'm all excited about Community Trash Window, we need that. She gonna get you set up?
I am, I'm gonna get it. They sent me about four thousand bucks today.
Oh. Brian, help him get that down there. Can y'all hear back there in the back, is it projecting out?
I'm Bentley Lerner, and I'm a part of the Harrison Middle School East, my partners in this project are Wade Phillips, J.C. Hudson, and Kenji Crane. The idea of this project is to create a community that is aware of the litter in our town, we hope that they will start to notice litter and take action in their daily lives. For this project, we plan to get volunteers from the community to go around the city and clean up the trash, we'll have different groups of, for different areas in Harrison. From the north side of town to the square, we'll have four groups, one for the square, one for the high school and middle school, one for parking lots of stores, and one for other popular areas in Harrison. We're open, we are open to suggestions in the organization of the cleanup. This project will benefit the community, the trash workers who have to clean up after careless people, and people who actually care about our world.
That's, that is? Hey, I'm gonna give you a... So, you're not, that beautification of our city is a great thing, and how many people have you got on board so far?
Um, yeah, I mean, I have my dad.
Oh, yeah! Okay, okay, well, I'll tell you what, if anybody around here doesn't approve that, they need to leave. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Come in. Any discussion? Is that every second?
Yes.
Okay. All of the party by?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Thank you, young man. Okay, next, and these folks right over here, we have a group of youth from the night, and they're gonna have a presentation from a trip to Washington DC, and if you all would just swing around there and introduce yourselves, everybody, and we'll get started. Mr., you run this thing here?
I don't know what you're doing here.
You run yourself?
That's good, they know I can run that thing.
Okay, for introductions, so everyone get started. You up, are we behind already?
No, I've just replaced.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Lena Rappel, and I'm the co-chair of our Harrison Division.
Hi, I'm Joey Weiler, I'm the chair of the Valley Springs Division.
Hi, my name is Amanda Briggs, and I am the secretary of the Harrison Division.
Hello, I'm Amanda Bright, and I'm the treasurer for Harrison Division.
And we are all members of IGNITE, which is the Boone County Youth Prevention Coalition. It's kind of mouthful, so in our very first meeting, we decided to make our own name for ourselves that would be fun and light and attractive to our new members, so we came up with IGNITE, and our logo, which is on our t-shirts, which we make Kwanis Salt for. So, we eventually got to go on a trip to Washington DC, which was an amazing experience for all of us. One of my favorite parts of the trip was just the aspects of the leadership that we learned from it. What we went to was the CADCA National Leadership Forum of 2017. Now, CADCA stands for Communities Antihypert drug Coalitions of America. I'm the one that has to remember all the acronyms for everything. So, um, one of the most important things that I personally learned there was the qualities of what a leader has to be, things like compassion for those who they are leading, and courage and integrity, and it's so important for me as the co-chair to learn these things so I can better lead our communities. Another very important part to me was the, on Thursday night, we went on a nighttime monument tour, which, I'm a giant history nerd, so I loved learning about all the history and getting to see just history pretty much being made around me, because if you've ever been to DC, that's what it's like, it's just history being created around you, and you think, in a hundred years, is this what the kids are gonna learn about in their history books? And that's just a very influential part for me.
Definitely one of my favorite things, the pictures are actually going on now, was the, we got a private tour of the Capitol with one of Senator Bozeman's head interns, and like she was saying earlier, it's just, you can feel that this is where all of the great decisions of our nation were decided, you know, all the big Supreme Court cases, everything like that happened there, and we were in the room where it happened. And another, one of the great things that happened while we were there, actually at the Capitol, like I said, we got to meet with Senator Bozeman, we got to meet with Representative Womack, whenever we were at Representative Womack's office, he actually couldn't be there, he was on a trip, but we were talking with one of his head interns, I was talking about how we need to get more funding for research into some of the new narcotics that are on the market, like e-cigarettes, and just any kind of vaping, and other new drugs that are on the market, but specifically e-cigarettes, and because we really don't know what they do to you, and if we're gonna stop them without it taking 50 years like it took with smoking, you know, if we start now, we're already ahead. It was just, it was really encouraging to note that, like, the federal government is with us, we just have to talk to them.
What I learned about, at the trip, was that sometimes it made you feel like that you can't make a difference, but you can make a difference, if you put in the work, and you work hard enough, and do your research, and do the projects, and do everything, you will be able to make a difference. And we also did, we got these workbooks when we were taking our classes, and there are ways that you can plan the correct way to make your project efficient, to where it will pay off. And also, my favorite part would be the Capitol Hill Day Tour, and we got our private tour at the Capitol, and it's just cool to see how all the things run in there, and how the decisions are made, and how that we could also make an impact in how those decisions go through.
Um, I took two things from the conference, the first was the size, I've been to multiple conferences, and this was the first conference that was national, a national level, which in which I think there were 500 students, which is about 10 from every state, including states as far away as Hawaii and Alaska. So, being there and realizing that we all are sharing a common goal and a common, we're fighting for a common thing, and that thing is drug free coalitions. And that brings me to my second point, which is the potential, the potential even in our small town Arkansas. These towns that we got to meet with, you know, we got to talk with and work with, have been doing it up to their 10-year mark, and we got to see the numbers and the lives and the, you know, actually what they've been able to do and increment their own communities, and they're just students like us. So, seeing that is, means it shows us that we can be something, that we can, even as students who attend school every day and do our homework and stuff, we can make a difference in our own communities. And that brings me to kind of what we're asking for, we're asking just mostly for support, we're a pretty small, it's going on our second year, so we haven't been able to do much more than just try and get some people to join so we can start doing things, going places. And we're a majority trying to work in the school, but we would love to start working outside the community and start working with other people, and just get our name out there and see that we, show that we can do things too.
Yes, one of the most crucial parts for us is, so, in a few years, when the next generation comes in, which is our younger siblings, is it gonna be a cleaner, safer school system for them? Because I've had three younger siblings myself, and I don't want them to have to go to schools that are ridden with drugs. And if we start to eliminate that problem now, then maybe by the time, even by the time our younger siblings get in there, and even our kids, it's a completely drug-free community, and that's what we really want.
And that's where y'all come in, actually. Basically, what we need in order to kind of get this off the ground and get this running is just open approval and acknowledgement that this is a viable thing that we're doing, and just open support for this movement. Are there any questions?
Well, I don't, you know, I think we're totally behind you, I don't know if you're, the IGNITE program is known that much, I know you're in with the Coalition, and NAFI and all that organization. As a city, we could, you have a website, or do you have anything that can be put on a website, or?
Not currently, but that's a very good suggestion, and we'll definitely think about bringing that right into our future promotion.
Okay.
Do we have a Facebook page?
We don't have...
At this point, we've not done much promotion wise, we've just been working to get ourselves trained, and most of what we're learning is body models, how to solve problems and look at problems and be a megaphone, so right now, we're just now starting to really extend our arms and get out of the community.
Well, I think, you know, cities want to support you, how we do it, you know, we can put it on the website, we can do multiple different things, we can do proclamations and everything like that. Our support's behind us, there's no doubt about that, it's just how we do it, and we're gonna have to ask you for that guidance, whether or not, and if you work things out and you get back with us, and we'll move forward with the program. I'm pretty sure that NAFI has, do they not have a website?
I'm Chris Marche, I'm the youth program coordinator, my job is to instill youth coalitions in all schools in Boone County, we got this grant a year and a half ago, and it's a potential 10-year grant, and so these kids are now four of starting coalitions in the schools in Boone County. Uh, we do work for NAFI at the college, and we do have a community substance abuse prevention program that meets on the last Wednesday of the month at 3:00 at the Durant Center, if anyone would love, would like to join us, but we do have a website, or we do have a Facebook page, put it out, we have a Facebook page that's on there, that we're being posted to the kids' trip and stuff. They are starting, what they're doing right now is trying to recruit kids into their coalition, this does not cost the kids anything, this is not a club that's gonna cost a child anything to participate in. Our grant money is to support these kids, and that's how we got to fund them, to take them to Washington DC, it didn't cost them anything. In two weeks, we're taking another group of kids to Eureka Springs for a smaller version of this, and we're taking kids out of the Alpena, Valley Springs, and Harrison schools into Eureka Springs to do what we call advocacy, which is a leadership on a smaller basis. And so we're getting these kids to start, this is at the beginning of the project, we're just in our second year of a potential 10-year grant, so these kids have done an amazing job of trying to get this together and try to get the word out, and their main focus is that, to recruit kids for their coalition and for the community's support, to recognize that IGNITE is a drug-free coalition that's trying to improve their schools and their community.
Thank you, guys. Okay. Okay, we're moving, we'll move on down here to fund for the infrastructure to match the Main Creek Bridge, where, you know, we talked about this earlier, that we had money, monies that were in our infrastructure from the spare drive bridge, and we have opportunity to apply for a grant, ADC, C, ADE, ADE grant?
Economic Development.
Yeah, Economic Development Grant, and we'd like to redirect monies from that project to... And we'd like to redirect monies from that project to apply for this grant. Now, believe it or not, there may be enough money in our infrastructure, and we're gonna move forward to see and continue with Spear Drive, uh, but we need the monies available to apply for the grant, and this is the only, well, that's the only way we can do it. But, don't, don't get me wrong, we're not abandoning Spear Drive. We're gonna work on that project also.
We're tracking to have a healthy surplus with our current infrastructure program. It would be sufficient to cover both projects, assuming that we can get the necessary crudles from human and corporate engineers to do the Spear Drive project. That's really been the biggest holdup with that project from a couple of points. Number one, not enough money was originally put into it in order to deal with the floodway issue. And two, it's gonna be a less than simple process with the layout of the floodway and the way it runs, that versus through the floodway to get approval on that project. I, my preference is, if possible, is to go ahead and continue down with both projects. I don't think it was ever really the intent to permanently abandon Spear Drive, but given some delays, we're looking at to move the money over for Main Street, but we'd, we'd have plenty enough time to see how the, the finances work out on the remainder of this particular infrastructure program to know whether we'll have enough funds to do both projects before, probably before we even can get grant approval.
We just need approval to move the funds from the infrastructure.
It was 400 grand? Uh, well, early estimates for the total project is about 800,000. It's a 50-50 grant, so we would be looking at 400,000 now. Those are early estimates, no, you know, a preliminary engineering report will have to be completed and studies done before we can really get the grant and get a full picture of the whole costs. And with federal money, that becomes some requirements that may drive the costs up as well.
How long before we just, until we find out that we get grant approval? And then, if we don't get grant approval, what happens to the money that's been reallocated for that project? Do we proceed?
We have not even applied.
Yeah.
Let's see if we.
They probably, no, they probably take a year.
Six to 12 months.
Yeah.
That's what we'd be looking at, probably just to know whether we got the grant. We will have to do the studies on the bridge before we can get grant approval back, so that's a condition that we have to take, but.
Believe it or not, we've waited out to talk about the situation out there on the Dusty Park Road. There's a possibility that we may be able to grant several projects out there. And I hate to get into this, because believe it or not, there's something we'll say later, but we're gonna have to work on that area out there, folks. We have no choice. We're gonna have the whole complete school system almost out there. Traffic will be at times horrendous. We're gonna look at forward, actually Forward Drive moving across the Broadway, we will look at that also. But I'll get into that later, 'cause I got some of the stuff over there. That's some of my, believe it or not, I'm already doing my state of the city, so. But.
I'll make a motion to redirect the funds. I'll second that.
A motion to second, redirect. Can I use all three in the corner or just Matt, the grant? Mr. Matt's the grant?
I think it was Matt's the grant.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Thank you. Mr. Fiker, we have a federal expense policy revision. At this time, we're currently paying 56 cents a mile to anybody that works for the city to go to training or wherever we go. But, since we had that, what, that little IRS thing, we had audit, said we were actually doing that wrong, and I need to fluctuate with the IRS, IRS standards. So, does everybody have this?
That's the only change that we're making.
Just going to IRS standards on mileage rate.
That's, that's what we do.
Yep.
Making a motion.
20 cents of the 2016, I think. That's like 20 cents less than you're having.
Yeah, but it changes, and they send out that data, so.
Make a motion, go ahead.
I have a motion to second, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Commercial building. Oh, commercial burning permit. And that should be a header up there. You don't have that up there. Get invited for me with this. You both wanna come on in here, we've got seats in here. I hate to look out there in the hallway and see people standing there right there.
Come on.
I'll give you all the opportunity to read it. Marvin, do you wanna protest in any way or?
It's mainly for, uh, we've, we've always had our burning permit that's come against the legal yardways. This is mainly for commercial use, uh, as a bigger island like a dozer deck. Of course, you still can't burn anything but natural vegetation with this, but this, this may go on longer. Uh, you still gotta have someone with it, uh, you still gotta be mad it's gonna burn 24 hours, this or something like that. Uh, we're still gonna go out and inspect it. It just mainly for the bigger, the bigger, basically dozer deck, big pile, and it's one of those, we just wanted to clarify, some of the stuff that we had on our residential burning permit that they were signing for actually wasn't, uh, they, they were signing knowing it was wrong from the start, but this, this here covers that because one of our other ones just said that it can't be over so big a pile and stuff, and this here's a bigger pile and all, just trying to make sure we're all kosher with everything. So it's, it's not letting you burn anything, still just natural vegetation, it's a bigger, bigger island, so.
It's more or less a housekeeping.
Yes, it is.
The legal authority for this, you've already approved, Matt, in adopting the new power code. It authorizes the use of this form or use of a form. Technically, I don't think the department has to have the council approval of this, but since they've gone to the effort, uh, I think this is the form that, uh, this way you have.
It was mostly.
Please, I mean, the inspection.
So, it, you know, for a housekeeping matter, if y'all wants to move to approve it with, with a vote, it makes it more official, but it's probably not required.
So I'll entertain a motion for approval, the commercial burning permit.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, or your second?
Second.
I have a second. Further discussion? There being none, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion there, thank you. Okay. Get down here to Mayor's comments.
Mayor, before you make those comments, I'd like to revisit one issue and then ask a, a question. I was notified before council, someone might be here to speak on behalf of, of an issue that they have something to share with that's outside the city limits, and I don't know if any of those individuals are here.
I will address those people after any comments.
Okay. And then the other thing I was gonna ask, Mr. Yannis, in regard to our status about our house at 102 Arbor, it's perfect.
Amen.
Just, there's been some traffic there, uh, there were, I think the, there was a eviction order was, was brought up, and I don't know what the status of, of the people leaving the residence.
Well, I think it's, of course, it's still privately owned property. I think the owner has made a new arrangement with, or am arrangement for the same tenant to continue living there. The only good indications that I'm receiving is that their intent is to at least do as much as they can to comply with any codes and, and maybe make the situation better to where there aren't any complaints, but.
I know the.
That's all unofficial. As I said, it's, you know, it's, it's private property and, you know, we don't really, constitutional rights of a private property owner at this point in time trump some of the things that neighbors would like to see happen there.
Understood. Thank you for the, I'll be available if there are more questions.
Hey, we have CATPC reappointments, two people that actually are termed her up, that being Robin Reeves and Shannon Snow, and it was, uh, these are appointments that actually does not come from the mayor. They, they, they're put to the council by the CATPC, and they'd like to reappoint Robin Reeves and Shannon Snow for four-year terms of that commission. And I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
I'm on that decision. Okay, I have a motion at second. Any discussion?
No.
There being no discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? All right, they're back over. Okay, we'll get into this thing I don't like, this, this Ponzi. I will, I will say, I'm sorry we didn't get our IT thing approved tonight before I get started, 'cause I had some issues in there with the IT. So I'll have to take, I'll have to, when I read it, I'll have to admit though. And I'll also say, before we get started, these TVs were, we purchased with the grant money from Walmart. They actually gave us a good deal. We, we went out there, all of us went out there, and they gave us, we probably spent, what, $2,500, and they said, take them for two. We will have Walmart here, and they will be here next month at the meeting, and we'll recognize them. But, appreciate the TVs. Now it is being the IT commercial.
A little bit. And I don't mind revisiting that, you know, my, my issue is why they put it to the table is I just didn't get to see the speaker.
I, I understand that, we'll talk about that.
Well, I don't mind putting it to the vote. I've looked over it the whole time during the meeting, and I'm comfortable with it. I just wish we would've gotten it earlier, so if it's, if we can go back to it, I'll, I'll be happy to.
That's your priority. You're sitting at the table, and if you make that motion, I'll be more glad to accept it.
I'll make a motion that we approve the hiring of a city IT person.
I will second that motion.
Hey, motion's been on the table that we hire an IT person, a second, in discussion. There being no discussion, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That will be a fun for our station. Okay, I'll get started here. Fellow citizens of Harrison, Arkansas. We elected and former city leaders are very proud of the accomplishments that have been attained in our city over the past year. We have maintained control of city expenditures and improved our financial app book and the city accounting department. Thank you, Luke. They're turning the deficit budget into general fund into over $400,000 surplus. We have been successful in our five-year goal of accruing city reserves to over six months of annual expenditures in just four years. These financial decisions and actions are properly built on reserves to a level that will protect and help any future opportunities that should arise. The county department has had success that worked with these departments, such as providing parks and rec departments with additional funding for pool upgrades, and we've also applied, also additional funding has been approved for other needs in 2017. And accounting success should also be mentioned, and this is a big plus for our city. Our water and sewer billing, billing has collected at a 99% collection rate. We're far above any municipalities in the state. And I'll attribute that to our county, the ladies down there and them, that they'll find God. The water and sewer department has completed rehabilitation of the main wastewater lift station, and that's lift station down there by Ben Hiddings. It, it probably did not even know what was going on in the city, but that was a big thing, believe it or not. That 600,000 off, was it 600,000?
Yeah.
Four, 350. But everybody's stuff went straight through, so that was a plus. Okay, we've also in the water department, we've replaced all the water meters in town, set up our fixed base meter reading system. This has been promised in past years, and the water department has carried out more than 1,020 work orders to meet the needs of this. We want to thank you for approving the fire and police tax again, which continues to increase the fire, fire and police reserves while also having funded needed equipment in both departments, and is helping to, for an early payoff of other equipment loans in the fire department. The police department has continuously grown through the sales tax also, that will assist in the addition of six new vehicles to the patrol fleet and adding five mobile data computers to their current vehicles, making it toll of 25 mobile data computers installed in the last year. The Harrison Police Department will add a new community response vehicle to the department, which will act as a multipurpose unit for command posts, crime scenes, and hostage negotiations. We're gonna have to use it. Two new officers will be added to, with the help of the $250,000 cops grant that we received through the Department of Justice. Having a full police force, paid and improved living wage, and a proper financial assistance underway ensures the continuing lowering of overall crime rate for a third year in a row, which is nearly 22%, which is great. And I'll give a big hats off to their police department. With continued financial improvement made available with the taxes, the fire department has maintained an ISO rating of a class three, and a class three is on a scale of one to 10, with one being the best and 10 being the worst, is keeping low insurance premiums for citizens and business and the like. Two, two new fire engines and a second turnout washer used to protect firefighters from risk of cancer and from chemicals and pathogens, and a new brush truck used for off-road fires for in and out of the city rescues have been purchased. New computers have been purchased for frontline vehicles to use during emergencies. Progresses also have been made for the station housing to improve the lives of firefighters while on a 24-hour shift. I will add to that, I'd like to see that our citizens actually visit our fire department and the visit our fire stations. We've made a lot of improvements, uh, they were kinda run down, and Marvin's got them on the course, and believe it or not, I'm, I'm starting to take a shower over here now, I got a better shower over here than I got at the house, which is great. Yeah. Goals for 2017 include the implementation of a new cloud-based information center, a live-fire training container, wireless headsets provide hearing protection of employees, purchase hazmat equipment, and partnering with the Boone County Office of Emergency Management for courses to certify individuals as hazmat technicians. The street park has formed extensive maintenance of Forward Drive. The department has notably completed traffic signals updates, upgrades to main and rush streets and begin traffic signal upgrades at Main and Bow. There have been numerous training improvement. There have been numerous training improvement, drainage improvement completed, and this work continues. It is our goal to begin improving the safety and flow of the bypass. We are going to invest $2 million to encourage and allotment of federal and state funding for a bypass. We hope we can move this project closer to a reality. The total cost on this project is $35 million. I am confident in our ability to work together for the success of this project. Goblin Drive, which I mentioned earlier, will need safety improvements addressed as most school students begin to attend school in the area in confined environment out there. We're gonna put in our infrastructure $4 million to improve Goblin Drive. These two expenses will be listed in our new infrastructure book that will go to the public next year. And we will be pushing these two things with the addition of several other improvements. Okay, we will continue to work on our infrastructure to complete the, the current projects, but we'll roll out a new plan, new eight-year plan soon. As the mayor of Harrison, I'm proud to say that each department has made great strides and continues to work towards a common goal of improving the health and welfare of the citizens. We have seen a rise in building permits, both residential and commercial, projecting continuing growth. We continue to promote our workforce with many groups and organizations, but we still have goals to be met. As many have seen and heard, we have growth in our retail section with acquisition of malls and establishment of retailers. This growth alone may create 125 jobs. We will also see the development of a new trucking company on the north side of town this year, creating additional 40 jobs. We realize that work is ahead to maintain and build our standards and quality of life in Harrison. This continued growth requires us to be flexible as we work towards supporting and continue the continuing growth. We will continue to work on the infrastructure to complete projects to better support communication and support each apartment's projects. It is our goal to create, thank you, and IT department work, city to progress this year. The cost will need to be absorbed by all departments. 2017 is an exciting year in our community as we grow and improve, and we'll continue to do so together. Thank you, fellow citizens, I then Cheryl Mayor, and I have some more. That's not the end of it. That is all I have for the paper. Within the next two years, I'm gonna say the end of this year and next year, we're probably gonna see a growth in Harrison we haven't had since the term of century. I cannot let some information out. We have a super building that is going in here. It's with existing structure, and that will be brought to the council next month. It has to do with health, believe it or not, I'll give that clue out. Anyway, when one thing happens within our city, and that being, you know, somebody purchased something, it, it tends to snowball. Well, believe it or not, we're gonna have some other retailers coming in here. We've got two banks coming in here. They're gonna expand, they're gonna also offer business opportunities here in town. I'm gonna say probably by the end of this year, we'll probably know more about what's going on, a lot of retailers will be here. But it also causes infrastructure, I call, I could say opportunities within our city, and we're working on those issues. We've got issues with our transportation roads, however you wanna put it. We've got, we've got other opportunities to work on, and we're gonna push those projects out there, and we're gonna build our city, make it a fine place to live. It's already a fine place to live, and we're gonna make it better. And I'll attribute most of this, this stuff to our department heads, and there's a lot of organizations in town that are working our workforce, which we're lacking, believe it or not. Our summer industries will expand if our workforce was somewhat better and had people gonna work. Our housing, I think you'll see a big plus in our housing, if you think so, Shannon. There's a lot of things actually going on in housing. That will be part of our infrastructure, and it'll be a plus for us. But all things coming together, thank our department heads, thank you council, thank you citizens. And that's, I'm gonna shut up. All right? Thank you all. Okay, this time I'll open up to the council, if they have anything else to bring up. Okay, I dropped my kitchen, I forgot something.
I think that all these young people did a fantastic job.
Okay, I'll give another name. Uh, we skipped something.
Which names? Maybe forget.
You made me forget this one.
Luke, it was an update.
Sorry, I was getting in the computer whenever you guys were doing the department reports. I just wanted to kind of do a monthly update for you. I apologize I don't have the financials there in front of you. I will get those to you tomorrow. They'll be out on the website, or if you guys wanna come by, I will have those as well. Just a little bit of update, hopefully y'all agree that. I know the numbers get kind of small sometimes, but our reserves really haven't changed a whole lot as far as general fund goes. Water and sewer did go up a little bit. As you can see, and we kind of warned you at the beginning of the year, we're gonna have a deficit in general fund. Water and sewer has a surplus at this time, and the only other thing that really is a deficit at this time is street fund, and that's just because they bought, they bought a $35,000 vehicle in January. So it'll catch up throughout the year, but I just wanted to give you guys kind of a little update here. If you'll go to the next slide, reserves in our fire fund and police fund, I did a little bit different. I didn't do it differently, it's just on a separate slide. For the operating fund, there are 378. We have $424,000 in our equipment fund, and that's the 30% that we set aside every month. So I would like to, and it doesn't have to be today, I would like for the council to move all of that equipment money over into the operating account, because we did purchase $560,000 in 2016 for new equipment. And of that money, I would like to take $100,000 to pay on the loan for the two fire trucks to help pay it off a little early, again, avoid some interest costs. And that's kind of how that was set up, was that we knew we had money coming in the, in the next couple of years to pay it off, and we'd like to go ahead and do that. Again, that's, it doesn't have to be done today, but I would like to bring that up. The other thing is the police fund, just kind of an update there. They bought $287,000 in equipment in 2016, so I'd like to take that out of the equipment fund and move it into operating. Basically, it frees you up to use it more readily for police and fire. That way it's not restricted. I do think we should set money back at some point in time for buildings. But for the first couple of years, I did wanna move some of that money over into the operating account to free up some of that money in case something does become available and that's, that's a necessity. That's all I have.
Any questions for, for back?
So you don't necessarily need to do it tonight, is there, is there any reason to wait?
No, there's no reason.
Chief Foul, Chief Liddick, do you have a problem moving that money? Or category or nothing?
No.
And we're not, it's not like we're not building it, we're continuing to build it.
Hundred fifty.
It was at $102,000 this month in sales tax, so we're putting $30,000 a month roughly into that equipment line still.
And if we move that, how quickly can we make that payment to Reg?
Tomorrow.
Can I make a motion to move those funds over?
Okay, motion, second to move funds from the police and fire to the operating account? Okay. Any further discussion on that? There been none, all in favor, aye? All opposed, aye?
Thank you.
Thank you, that'll get there. The fire department, should have them paid off once.
Supposed to be done.
Yeah.
I'll give you that date and amount left next meeting.
Okay, councilman, councillet, win? Oh, excuse me, I can't say that anymore, it's, councilmember, councilmembers, I'm sorry. I'll get used to that sooner or later. But you have anything else? Okay, I will open it up, republic comments?
Sorry, we have a group here that would like to speak with the mayor and the council.
Yes.
Could you come forward?
Yes, come on in. You're the one, you're the one that told him to get in here earlier.
That's right.
That's fair to y'all. I'm just kidding. Hey, guys, we appreciate your time tonight. I'm Tanner Nelson, I'm with the Boone, Boone and Newton County Drug Court. We came in to talk to you guys a little bit about the event that we have coming up on April the 8th. It's called the Party at the Park, it's our fifth annual year. It's gonna be a really good time. I don't know really what I'm supposed to say, but there's gonna be a lot of fun stuff going on, it's absolutely free. There's gonna be two, two major vans that are gonna be there. The first one is gonna be Olivia Lane. She's in the top 40 billboard charts. Also, saving April should close out tonight. I guess we've already made all the arrangements to shut off the bridge on that Saturday and do it kind of like crawdad days, and we've got volunteers and everything, and we're gonna throw it up in the air that if anybody had any suggestions for activities, booths, we, we have a lot of local vendors that are probably gonna be attending there. We don't have a whole lot of permits yet, but it is April the 8th, so it's coming up for just.
One, one day?
It's just one day. Just one day, it's a Saturday, April the 8th.
And what, what is actually your organization?
The Boone and Newton County Drug Court. We are kind of on their team, but on the other side. If we would've had something like that 25 years ago, I'm not gonna be standing here in front of you today. We're fighting for the same cause, so it was really touching to see the youth of our community stand up here and do what they did, and get to do the things that they get to do, that's pretty cool. This event, this event really is, it's for us to give back to the community, because we, as addicts, alcoholics, we have the disease of addiction, and we haven't always lived the most productive lives. It's to, it's kind of releases us back into the wild and shows the public that we can do big things, you know, we can, we can be members and productive like everyone else, but we have to maintain a program. And Drug Court has given us that, and that's to kind of raise awareness for our local community to know that recovery is possible.
Have you, have you worked anything through our commission, the Bureau, have you got them on board with you? They can help you tremendously, believe it or not.
The, I'm sorry.
CVB.
Matt Bill, he kept his right ear to the mic.
He's right there.
He's right there.
He did miss him, he's 10 feet tall.
Believe me, believe me, that young man, well, he can help you. And we'll help y'all on a kind of, you know, if we need to put something on our website, you need somebody in the city to do things for you, just feel, feel free to ask.
We appreciate it. We appreciate it.
We appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's kind of hard to follow all these other presentations. Well, I didn't know I was gonna have to make a presentation, I just thought we were just gonna sit here and listen, and y'all were gonna talk about it and all that stuff.
Y'all are hot now.
Yeah.
You're hot.
They just threw, they just threw the ball in my hand, you know, I'm like, okay.
So why didn't Yalon have to talk? I wonder why Yalon didn't have to talk?
Cause she's.
You need to.
No, it's up to us, it really is. I mean, it's, it's up to us. It's not for her, it's for us. It's, it's for us to be able to feel good about something, you know, that we did.
That's what it's all about.
It is, to help others, it is.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Okay, well, have anybody, anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir. My name's Charlene Hudson. Wayne and I have tile and under the downtown. I think I've probably called your office a few times over the last few weeks. We've had an ongoing problem with Inland Trash Service. It's, it's not been the last month, it's not been the last six months, it's been since day one with Inland. The last six weeks, I've kind of kept a record of Inland not picking up my trash, which is basically every week, and it's numerous phone calls. Sometimes they come and get it at the end of the week, if I call them often enough. Most time not. The back of our store looks like they trashed up because I have no place to go. Our dumpster overflows all the time. About three weeks ago, one of the guys that works for me was calling me saying, you need to get them to empty our dumpster. Me thinking that it would be an extra dump called Inland, paid them 50 bucks, they came to me on the spot, emptied it that afternoon, within 30 minutes of me calling them. Then I found out that, hey, this is Thursday, they didn't empty my dumpster Tuesday, so not only have I paid them, I paid them an extra 50 bucks. They were going to supposedly talk to the supervisor and refund that money, that was about four weeks ago, I have yet to see that money back.
Do you not, did we not just work on, you, help you that day? Did you not just call?
I've called numerous times.
Did they not come and talk to you?
No.
The supervisor never came and talked to you?
Nope, haven't heard a word.
Okay, well, we need to talk, that's.
And I've gotten some, you know, I've been doing a little, I don't have a whole lot of time. We have two businesses, I work about 18 hours a day. Skyline School, I believe, is supposed to be picked up twice a week. I believe their pickup date is on Monday. This is a picture outside the cafeteria at Skyline, at Skyline School on Monday, the 13th. Outside their cafeteria. That was their pickup day.
Well, I'm gonna say this, I'm not gonna sit up here and make excuses for anyone, that's for sure.
Well, that's the next three days of Skyline School.
I would, in what we normally do, and we've had a rash of it, I'm gonna say, within the last month. And I'm gonna, like I said, I'm not gonna make excuses, but I will tell the general public and anybody that calls the office, send us documentation, emails or pictures, anything like that, so if we do take a next step, we have this information.
Is, is Inland not in breach of the contract?
Well, I think they are, but it is not, it's not an easy step, let's put it that way.
I, I, and I get that, I, I get that. But I also get that I'm not the only one having problems, I've talked to numerous people. And honestly, I'm tired of it. I, I, I don't have the time to call them every week, two or three times a week, and I don't feel I should have to.
You're exactly right. You're exactly right.
Yeah, if, if.
But it is our responsibility somewhat. Last year, well, actually, the last two years, I think we put them on some wild of a notice. It's, it's getting there, believe it or not.
Well, I, you know, I sent a letter to your office. I'm gonna ask the council, and I know what you're gonna tell me, but I'm gonna throw it out there anyway. I'm asking for a waiver for you to give Mark Methan the permission to set me a dumpster. I'll tell Inland, come and get theirs. I would rather pay Methan extra to come and dump my trash and it actually get done.
By law, by the contract law, I don't think, we cannot grant waivers. I wish we could.
Well, I wish you could.
It's something, it's something this office is gonna have to work on, and believe it or me, we will work on it. And we are working on it, you know, and I, I'm not, like I say, I'm not asking, I'm not wanting excuses, I want them to take care of their business.
They, they need to take care of business.
And it's a constant battle, I will tell it right up front. It's a daily battle in the, believe it or not, the mayor's office.
I'm sure it is.
And I don't battle it every day, but that young lady sitting right over there does.
I'm sure she has.
It's not a good thing. And it's coming to a point, we're gonna have to take the next step, if they don't get it straightened out.
You know, if, if you need support from your businesses and your residents, I'm sure you can get that. You know, if it takes a petition.
Well, what we need is documentation.
Okay.
And a man may be able to reach out, say it better than what I'm saying, I'm not legally a lawyer. I'm not legally a lawyer. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? I'm not legally a lawyer. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Mr., Ms. Hudson, thank you for bringing it up. I think so this, I brought it to the mayor's attention last week with Skyline School and the school district. I can't believe that Inland can't dump the hospital and the schools on a regular basis, let alone businesses. It's a health hazard, it's a frustration for the public, and I know the mayor and the city are working on it and working constantly, but I'll be honest with you, it is time for some resolution to give them an ultimatum.
I'll be honest with you, I can't believe your school superintendent is not here every month, raising cane just like...
They call on a regular basis, and I'm...
And well, they should.
It's, it, like I say, it's caused more expenses to schools, uh, with the pest prevention. It is a serious issue.
It is a, it's a health code violation.
And to say that they're in breach of their contract, I'm sure the reason why the mayor's saying that is they need documentation once they get into court or whatever, but it's one of those things, we all know when something's ugly. You don't have to check, you know, with anybody. This is an ugly situation. They need to be put on notice.
We can do that.
I mean, and we should be the hammer, unfortunately, the citizens of this community, they shouldn't have to do this on a regular basis.
No, we shouldn't. They shouldn't fulfill the contract of war.
They should fulfill their contracts.
And it's the same story every time you call them, they have a truck down. I mean, I've heard that story numerous times, and like I told them, they may have a truck down, but that's not my problem. If, Inland's a big company, if they have trucks down, they need to bring trucks in the driver's seat.
You're exactly right. It, it is an issue, and I appreciate you coming, but believe it or not, we're working. Well, I can't say it's going to be resolved, but we're working toward that.
Well, I appreciate your time. I hate to, after all the great presentations, I hate to...
No, that's all right. That's what it's all about.
That's for business and city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in the audience like you say? John, you're not getting out. Okay.
Wow.
I'll entertain a motion for a German.
Is this the Trump empire here?
No. I'll entertain a motion for a German.
I'm moved.
A motion all in favor by aye?